Call to order the meeting. We have a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes, I have one correction on page two, second paragraph, about the split of the additional added funds left over from the two previous years. I don't think that's, I noted that we don't have to split that until after three years. And that's not in the.
Okay. Which paragraph is that? Second paragraph. The question was that we don't have to split until after three years. Page two, paragraph two.
And where did you want that added, Mark?
Just added in that paragraph that we do not have to split that, that 48-52 split only takes place after three years.
No, it doesn't.
That's what I, you were told, I was told that in the meeting.
No, it takes place every year.
I was not told that. Show me in writing where that's at, okay? I want to see that in writing somewhere.
It's how, it's how the capital plan has been written since its inception.
Well, I want to see it in writing. So just, yeah, if it's, if it's in writing, I'll accept it, but I want to see it then. Because that's not what I was told in that meeting, and we met over there a couple of months ago, and Dale was in that meeting also.
No, you take out for the courthouse cost on top, you know, from the first section, and then the last two sections are the remaining after you take off the top for the courthouse expenses, and then that is split 48-52.
Yes, that's correct. But any carryover, mind, wasn't used, was not allowed to be split after three years because we could go on and use it later.
It was nev-, it was never said that, no.
Well, I, I'm saying, I recall being said that, so I just want to see it in writing where, what you're saying is, if that's the way it's supposed to be, then, then show me in writing, that's all I want to see.
Well, there were, there were no, well, there were no additional instructions when the state sent us that revenue. It was, we made a mistake, here's this much extra money for 2011, we're going to catch you up from January to April in 2012 for what you should have got, and then our money was increased, then the rest of the year.
And. But that was after the capital plan had been made.
If we, if we had done it, then they would have gotten their equitable share, you know.
In that meeting, you said there was $69,205 left over from 2011 and 2012. And there was $744,000 or something like that, plus or minus, that's going to be our share of this year.
Is that something that we can look into?
Yeah, we can look into, yeah. I just, I just wanted to know.
So do, do I need to add that to the minutes?
Yeah, and I would like to see it added to the minutes, and then we can go on.
Even if it's not true.
We can get it solved, figure it out later on.
I think what Mark is referring to is the money that is in the capital plan that hasn't been spent.
Yes.
And I think what was, what was said, that after three years, the council can take that money and use it for a project, for anything, it must be in general funds, right there.
That's the three years. The three years is any money that's unspent of these added funds that the county has, then, then goes to the 48-52 split.
I think, and maybe I'm wrong, and I can be corrected, Mark, but you guys might be talking past one another here. You're, you're absolutely right, 48-52 after the three years, but as it sits right now, it's also divided, 48-52. Anytime the added funds come in, every year, it's divided like that. After three years, if they haven't been spent, if the money hasn't been appropriated, then it returns back to the municipalities that were taxed on that. So 48 here, 52 there, and actually, I think Orange would receive like a token share. Glenwood would get its token share as well.
Yeah, Glenwood.
Yeah.
When counties do not have a special added legislation like we had, then it strictly goes by the population split. So if there were, if that were not in place, it would be all the way down the line, 48-52.
Correct.
Correct.
So you want to put in here that you're saying that the 48.
I mean, I made, I made that comment, whether it's true or not, I don't know, but we'll just figure that out later.
Right, you made the comment that.
So we'll work on that later.
And so. But just that you thought the 48-52 split only applied after three years.
Correct. Yes.
I want to get it. And again, that's something we can verify. Anything else on the minutes? Debbie, on the first page, it says we approved the February minutes. Change that to April. Okay.
I'll move to truth for the next.
Is that, that second?
I'll say it.
Discussion? Been moved in second that we approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Motion approved. Mail? Debbie, any new? An interesting mail.
Interesting mail. I, I did receive a couple of notifications from the state concerning, they were both concerning the highway. One is about the additional money that is going to flow through to the highway based on this year's legislation, and we do have estimates, and I provided that to Jay. And the other thing, and I just came in and put it in your box, which you probably got in your shirt pocket or not.
You don't have it either yet.
I put, it is that, that we get every year, that tells how much you're going to get MVH and how much MVH2, and then how much local road street, that formula that we calculate on, like X percent or whatever. So that, that came in today, so I gave you a copy, and then the others I will give to the budget committee.
Another good news thing.
Yeah, good news.
Do you recall the amount, or?
$487,000.
$458,000.
$458,000 this budget year, which is July 1 through June 1 of next year, the state's budget year.
Well, that is good news. Are there any restrictions on how it can be used, or do they?
Just the same, just the same restrictions apply as they do to the regular motor vehicle highway and local road street.
Oh, good news. Anything else? Mr. Bryson, that brings us to you.
Your county attorney has nothing of news or important to comment on.
We're moving right along. Reports. Commissioners representative.
Commissioners haven't had too many, they have had two lengthy meetings, but the meeting before last, we had, the biggest news probably was that Bill Gray committed a vent pipes from the boulders that go across the seating of the power room for the clerk, or leaking and ruined that seating. What that's going to, the joints, the joints in the pipe are leaking, it's going to be more of a problem to get the scaffolding to put up there and take that seating out and get to them. Joint Control was supposed to get them in and look at that, trying to repair them this week or next, I believe.
Who did you say was coming in?
Joint Control.
Johnson.
It created quite a mess, but like I said, what it is, is the pipes are going to that big ground, there's two of them, there are two boulders, one go, each one is the outside of the building, and the joints are, are leaking, and that one's going down on the seating of that, that storage room, pretty much, they ruined them and that, but you can see just fix those joints. Mr. Houston, he can try and get a summary in to help it, because where we go on last year, that's no cause for the county, it's, it's a stupid, somebody's just great, it's pretty knowledgeable computers if you can direct it, pretty much, it's just free health. Covered Bridge, they come and ask for funds, which there is a tax for the Covered Bridge, and they want to make some repairs on that up to the, up to the park. We talked about a speed limit subdivision, or speed limits in the subdivisions. Kinsley out here has a 20 mile an hour speed limit, the rest of the subdivisions have none, and we're talking about trying to get speed limits in those, even though, like everything else, you'd be able to be there to enforce it if somebody does, does speed. Zoning artist, Bill, Bill McDaniel, was here when we passed an ordinance last month concerning situations that we had with, out here on 44, we just wanted to build a medical building, and clear enough some of that language so that everybody is informed and has a fair shape on where it gets re-sold, or where there's going to hurt businesses we now have. Cemetery Commission's been there this month, this month and last month. This morning, we, we approved 2500 and some dollars for, for equipment for them to buy equipment to mow, trim the grass, cut the shrubs, and items like that. If you agree, then, then they'll need additional appropriation for that. The, the other main item that we have been discussing is a highway garage, which is, which is a big item, as many of you know, that highway garage down there is in very bad shape, in fact, it's, Russ, you had to deal with that before. Three or four years ago, Mr. Flum was hired to go down there and look at it and, and see what he thought, and his report when he came back said the building was basically unsafe, is that correct?
Yes.
So we would like, we would like to build a, build a new highway garage down there. Jay and I have met with two vendors, one here in town and one from Shelbyville, concerning what it, what it might cost to put one up. And we're talking in the 500, 600,000, we haven't, I haven't got a figure from the man in Connersville yet, but he and the kid did, he ran 500,000, the one in Shelbyville thought we ought to do, be able to get the whole thing for 550, that was, that was a good safe number. In, in looking at the KIM cap funds, which is where that would have to come from, this year's revenue is going to mount to 162,700. You've got a balance of appropriations for this year of 142,557, and at the end of this year, Debbie's estimate is we'd have 954,419, or around that. Now, you know, the, the KIM cap is for taking care of our facilities, the jail, the annex of the courthouse, and the highway garage, that's, that's the four facilities we have. Everything else, we have in good shape, the courthouse is new, we just got through remodeling the jail, and Billy says there's really only minor items that we might need over there, we'll put a new jail on it, year before last, I believe. So all we have, all we have left is the, is the highway garage, which is in horrible condition. And with the money, with the money we have, we think it's time, that, that's one of the commissioners' responsibilities also, is maintain, maintain the facilities, and that would, that would give us a garage where we had decent facilities to store our equipment and to work on. You know, you, a lot of our equipment's sitting outside, you don't see any armored, buy high-priced equipment, leave it, leave it set outside in the weather to get damaged. The shop we have down there, you can get one piece of equipment and to work on at the time. If we got this, we could have, we could have a bigger shop. We're talking about a steel frame building, which would last for several years, well, it's going down, it's a pole building, the life of that, the life of any pole building is about 25 years, and it's been there that long, I believe. So we would, this morning, the commissioners approved advertisement for architects to give us a quote on their qualifications, subject to the, the council giving their consent to go ahead and build this, because there's no need to hire an architect if you're not going to purchase the money to build one. So we would have, we would ask that you consider that and consider the needs to, this KIM cap money, I know what, that your general fund is in dire straits, but this money can't be used, can't be used for general fund expenses, it can just be used for capital approvals.
Okay.
So that's, that's my report. We would hope you would consider the garage deal.
All right, I see we're on down there for new business, so are you planning to stay until?
If I need to, if you want to take care of it now, that would be fine, whatever you want to do.
Mark, do you want to?
Well, I, I got a couple of questions. You want to do it now, then we won't have to do it later, that's fine. Are you, are you, right now, you said you've asked for some quotes from, from some engineers, architects for a building. When do you expect to have those ideas of what that might cost to do that at next meeting?
If, if we could go ahead and, and advertise it, I would, I would think by next meeting we could, as, you know, as I talked to you before, I'd like for you to be involved in, in talking to these when we get these quotes. I'd like to get this building started, if, if we could, I'd like to build it in the summertime, so you could, you get a lot better work, a lot more work done when the weather's good than when it's bad, you know.
Okay, so for right now, what you want to do is just get a price from the architect to draw the building up, so.
Right.
So next meeting, you come back with what that might cost us to do that?
Right.
Okay.
But, but on the other hand, I would, I would want to, you know, I'd like to have a consensus that you are going to appropriate the money to build the building, there's no need to spend 20,000 or whatever it costs to get an architect and then come back and say, well, we, what cost, we're not going to build, well, what's it going to cost to build a building, we're not going to build it.
Right.
You know, that's just, that's just wasted money.
Barton, if I can step in, and Debbie's reminded me of something that's fairly important. He's saying, sending an RFQ as in a request for qualification, and not a request for a quote.
Yeah, okay.
So the first thing, I don't know if, I don't think, well, a month, maybe 30 days will be enough time, but the first process is just a request for qualification, you find out who's qualified, and then, and then after that, you have those pools, and then you can negotiate on the price. So it can be a.
It's stupid, but that's all.
Okay.
They've got great lobbyists, so that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't take too long to get that, I mean, if they got somebody and get the price.
They should have, all of them should have a packet ready that they could send out.
But what I'm saying is, it's kind of sensible to go through that process unless we're, unless we're wanting to build a building.
Serious about it. Yeah, I mean, architects and engineers sometimes put a lot, put a lot into producing something to give to you for that, so I don't, I think if, why don't we do that if you're serious.
You know, like I said, we've, we've talked to a couple of, a couple of vendors, Jay pretty much knows what he needs, Mark has a good idea of what would work and what wouldn't. One of Jay's main concerns is in the shop area, that, that you build it tall enough that you can raise the, raise a truck all the way up, which you have to do sometimes work on, and I had him measure it, and Dan, that, that amounts to 22 feet, all, all the way up. And, and what was thinking, we could build part of the building, the 22 feet high for the shop, and then put an office on the end, like the one we got now, storage above, and on the other, on the other half of it, have an open shed, and that could be down 14, 16 feet, just some pool, the equipment in, all the weather.
I will say that my engineer, when he looked at the building, he did really deem it unsafe, because there's actually poles that are completely rotted on it at the bottom, so technically by law, he could, he could close it down.
Right, condemn it, close it down.
Yes, he could do that, but he hasn't yet, so.
It's been pieced and pieced.
So it is a serious matter. Have we ever looked into other facilities around town, that baking buildings that might?
Well, yes, we have.
Okay.
I, I've looked and tried to get the Crown Building up there, and that, that would have given us room, that got away from us, it, it had a bad, a bad roof on it, I went as far as to get Shumos to give us an estimate on the roof, and that was going to be quarter million dollars to fix the roof on it before we, before we even started in.
Okay, that's the old ready.
Yes, yes, which, which would have worked if we could, if we could got it, you know, within, within reason, but I was hoping that we could, they could give it to us and we could put a new roof on it and go, but that didn't, that didn't happen either, and in the meantime, Keener's bought it.
Okay.
And another, another thing I'll say about that building, I have talked to the, I have talked to the high school out here about the interior of the, the offices and the storage up above, about us putting up the building and then them coming in there as a project, them, them building our, our offices and restrooms and our storage unit, our inside, inside finish, and they indicated they would be interested in that project. If we could get it in their timeline, it'd probably be, it might be the second semester next year when they could do it, but they are interested in it, which would save us some money.
Thank you, Barton. Next on our list are committee reports. Dale, you're in the closest here.
Okay, well, as chairman of the budget committee, I will announce that, starting tomorrow, the budget committee, council's budget committee, Councilman Wenna and Councilman Nobby and I will be meeting every Wednesday of the week, 5 o'clock, right here, from now until budget hearings in August, or until we're finished with our work, and if we have to, I think we'll go two days a week, won't we, fellas?
Sure.
Okay. So we're starting earlier this year than we did last, and hopefully we'll have all the hard work done before budget hearings and the groundwork made and finished in order to give council the opportunity and the information to make some intelligent decisions in budget hearings in August. So if anyone has any particular interest pertaining to the 2014 budget, just forward those concerns or comments on to any of the three of us, and we'll take every, every idea seriously, and that includes the commissioners also. There, there will probably be times, Barton, when we may ask one or more commissioners to come in and talk to us between now and August, but we're going to meet, for now, at least once a week, from now, beginning tomorrow until budget hearings in August.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What time will it be?
5 o'clock.
Dale, regarding that, I know we had talked about setting up a conference call about one of the suggested contractors or some of the ideas. I ask Agent, I ask, not our attorney, but our IT person, if we could have a use of a phone for a phone conference, for the three gentlemen to be on the phone conference with this contractor, so, with some ideas and suggestions, so. He thought it would be okay that we had a connection, a phone, we could plug in a phone here.
Oh, in this room?
In this room. They're, they're always, used to sit, there always used to be one, I think it's sitting back there, but I don't know why it isn't, isn't alive. He did that, so. He thought that we could easily do that, and if we didn't have a phone here, that he could maybe borrow one across the hall, city hall, for the purpose of a conference call.
We have, we do have the phone.
Okay. Well, that's good, Dale, good and bad, I mean, I, it's hard to believe that budget time will be here unless than three months.
It'll be here before you know it.
Russ? Our other committee, do you have anything to?
No, like I told you, the date's really is over by now, but we won't be meeting once a week like Dale and them guys, I think we can, once we get real bit started on it, we're going to need help from the auditor's office, so whenever we can get free with, Kathy's going to have to help us with that split of that, if we can get this split, I'm not sure we can do it, but we're looking to.
Well, yeah, either Kathy or I, either one can help you.
So sometime.
Is there any preliminary materials or anything I could, we could get for you? It's, it's kind of.
I think we need to drop the 144s, I, I think we need to look, really look at the 144s.
We can get your copies.
I know you can't change the, the setup on the 144, but we can do a better job of putting our salary codes in, and I think personally that the 144s need to be, salaries need to be listed separately. For instance, at the highway, instead of lumping them all together, needs to be, we can call them whatever you want to, 1, 2, 3, and 4, or whatever, in there instead of lumping them together. I think it should be each individual, if you, if we take a notion not to hire that person down here, if somebody retires or quits and we don't want to hire anybody, then we have a right to do that, but now it's all lumped together, we can't get it done.
Well, I will tell you one thing that was quoted to me just this past week by State Board of Accounts, too, just because you have an approved line item and just because you have an approved 144 doesn't mean you have to pay, because there was question come up on something else.
I see, and I was told, I started earlier, that yes, we did have to pay.
But you do have to have a salary order that's put together at the beginning of every year.
Sure, I understand that.
Yeah.
But it can be, we can, we can list it on that 144, we can list them, as many as we can want, on there, instead of lumping it all together. For instance, we'll say, we got 10 employees at $100,000. Instead of, instead of listing 10 employees at $100,000, we'll list 10 employees at $10,000 fees.
I think, well, I think on the highway, it states at the bottom, like six drivers at whatever their salary is per hour, then it lists five equipment rate, equipment operators at so much, one mechanic at so much an hour, and then I think Jay and, and Cameron listed at the top with an annual salary. I think they may be on that one. What we can do, our new computer system, we can pull out any department where before we couldn't, and so that's real easy, we just look up a name of a department, click on that, that shows the employees in that department unless their salary, so that may be, I may be able just to get that information, so you start looking at it, seeing if you want, what else you want more.
That's good. That'd be a start.
Good idea. That's, that's good, that the software is helpful along that line, and it should take some time when we get to the budget. Hopefully committees come together. Anything else along that line? Russ?
No.
Okay. Then we'll move down to unfinished business. First item is the cemetery commission.
Well, that's that one with the customer. For those of you who don't know I am, who I am, I'm Cindy Nichols, and I am the Secretary of the Fayette County Cemetery Commission. I want to back up a little bit, because we had discussion about attending a workshop in Kerran, and my husband David and I myself, all attended the meeting, or the workshop on May 17th and 18th, we learned a great deal, we came back with a lot of things. I have some pictures that my husband put to work, if you want to pass them around, the before is in front, the after, put to work what he learned in the workshop, and we were very pleased with what we learned, and we feel like we're ready to hit the road running now. At our last meeting with the commissioners, we went through our equipment. At our last meeting with the commissioners, we went through our equipment list that we had and they in turn countered and they gave us a figure that they wanted us to meet. They gave us a figure to be on or below of two thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-two cents. We came in with ours at two thousand five hundred and forty dollars and fifty-one cents. We had to cut quite a bit, but we feel like we got it down. I do have copies if you'd like to have a copy of our estimates. So we're here tonight to ask for your approval to take the money that they have approved and signed for this morning to move the money to another line item so we can purchase tools. And again, I have to reiterate that we do have to go back to the commissioners and ask them to spend the money.
Okay. Wait, this morning?
This morning they approved.
They approved and signed off on that transfer request.
On the transfer.
So in that, in the amount, what was it, two thousand?
Five hundred and forty dollars and fifty-one cents.
Yeah.
It's two thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-two cents they wanted us under. It came in at two thousand five hundred and forty dollars and fifty-one cents.
Two thousand what?
Two thousand five hundred and forty dollars and fifty-one cents is what we came up with.
And so what we're looking for is an approval to transfer those funds from?
Yes, if you want to do that. It would be a transfer of funds from the restoration, stone restoration line item, which is three into a equipment line item, which is a four.
Can we go ahead and proceed with that?
Okay, say, let me ask you a question. On your restoration, are you guys getting, are you guys going to be doing that?
We won't be doing any restoration. We'll be doing cleaning the cemeteries, cutting down trees that are fallen or they're dead. We'll be straightening stones and cleaning stones. We won't be working on putting together broken tombstones or anything like that at this point. We don't, we are all planning on attending the advanced workshop this fall, but that's something we have to get experience and we're just going to work towards that.
This is what you're wanting to do, all right? Slides, mold and you want to restore these?
We would like to learn how to do it, whether, you know, you're still going to need somebody to take care of the major items. We don't have the equipment to do big stones, big monuments. We don't have experience with the big stuff. We just want to do the little ones, the ones that, you know, two people can handle. But at this point, we're, you know, we just want to get in there and get the cemeteries cleaned up, get the stones straightened and cleaned so they look nice and that everybody can be proud of them.
Commissioner Barton, Barker, what will we, what kind of safeguards we putting in so we don't have happen what happened last time with the equipment? Is there anything, so the equipment's not missing like it was last time, what are we, what are we doing to ensure that?
The equipment isn't missing.
Well, let's, what was talked about last time or whatever.
What equipment?
In the last meeting, they talked about some of the equipment that they couldn't find it or it was sold or whatever, just we ended with that.
The cemetery commission all resigned last year.
Right.
We, we sold most of that equipment. The lot of the equipment out there was being refurbished outside through the beginning of the year. Some of the equipment was sold. This whole line here, just man myself, for them to do yard work, trim, trim the grass, come around the stones, cut, cut the shrubs down.
All the equipment will have a Fayette County property tag on it, whatever you call it, okay? The sticker and that's something we mentioned a couple of meetings or two meetings ago. Excuse me, anything where a sticker would wear off like the wooden handle is going to be engraved into the handle. So we should have an inventory control of the equipment.
It just was, Bob, last time that, you know, there was questions as to what we have, we didn't have and just if they decide all.
Some of the equipment was mentioned, there was on the inventory.
There was a lot that wasn't ever on the inventory.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, so we're doing this.
But then there was a lot of it.
Was ever there or not, we don't, we don't know.
But what was there, there were, I don't know how, a couple mowers, Jade, that were transferred down.
A couple mowers, weed eaters. Everything we took out of there, we had to work on, even give it a run.
Yeah.
And the weed eaters were missing parts and we just took them to the sale and they sold them for parts.
Along with other, there's other listed material.
Nothing, they wouldn't start, they wouldn't run. They were just, I think what we have left, we have the two trailers from down there. We had the one trailer for about six years because John went, or not John, Randy wouldn't use it. We've had it down there for a long time, but he used it, but he used a little trailer. We've got it down there too. Because we told him we could use it rather than sell it, we could get more use out of it and then he went out and promised on the trailers. And I think we've got two mowers down there.
And it is county property. It can be transferred from one.
There was just some questions in the last time, I just want to make sure.
I know, and that keeps getting said and I keep trying to answer that and I don't know whether, people don't believe what we're saying. I, I kind of took offense to it at the last meeting and almost sounded like somebody and we were the ones maintaining in the auditor's office, the capital assets list made fast and loose with some equipment, which I don't think Sharon and I did that.
And I wasn't, I wasn't making any.
Yeah, no, I knew you weren't.
Trying to get clarification as to what's going to happen. I'm sure that a process will be placed, but then we say it publicly and everybody understands what's going on then.
And Councilman Wenna, we also are going to have a procedure that only the board members will be checking out equipment. You know, volunteers may use it on the site, but volunteers won't be checking in and out equipment. So we have to be accountable for it. We're going to assign in and out sheet for what we take out of the building to use and sign it back in when we bring it back.
That's good.
Okay, now on this, on this equipment that you have here, is there money in here for repairs of that equipment if something goes wrong with it?
No.
Is there money in there for gasoline?
We had spoke about gasoline this morning. They said if we purchased, we could get reimbursed for the gasoline and like supplies, you know, your oils and your, your things for, you know, you go ahead and pay for it.
Pay for that out of, is it out of cemetery?
We'd have to.
We'd pay for it out of cemetery.
Have we got, have we got a line item in there for that?
No, we would have to.
We don't have a line item. And for repairs, we can win.
Okay, then if I, I think I mentioned last time about the volunteers, insurance, are we, are they covered with what we're doing here? Has it been through the, through our insurance company that it's okay for the volunteers to do this?
They're going to be covered. If the insurance company has, has to have a list of deliveries going out there before anybody goes out. Again, they can go up there and get everything back and have compensation.
Okay. Let me, let me just ask this question again, Barton. I know you guys contracted out twenty cemeteries or twenty-five or something like that. What, did we, have you ever thought about contracting the rest of them out to, for instance, these people? Could they, they can be contractors and they were, we really don't have responsibility for the equipment, we don't have responsibility for the gas, we don't have responsibility for insurance, we don't have nothing.
Yes, we have, and that's, that's a, that's a good idea. You know, they, if, if a group would want to do that.
I mean, this group, their group.
This group, whatever, we would do exactly what it's on cost.
Well, you only got so much money left in your, in your cemetery that money would be saved. For instance, we'll contract the rest of these out for ten thousand dollars.
You're at twenty-five for like twenty-six thousand dollars or something like that, aren't you?
I'm sorry, pardon?
How many, how many cemeteries are they taking care of right now?
Twenty.
And for how much?
It's twenty-something this year, goes to twenty-three something for the next two years.
The cemeteries without, next, whoever, see what their.
Yeah. I'm just doing the math in my head with what you're paying for the twenty.
Yeah.
You'd be paying quite a bit more than what they're.
Well, not necessarily, because the cemeteries that they're talking about, a lot of them are just fusile cemeteries, their families' cemetery or blessed one time, back in somebody's field and off the, off the road, which, which normally tradition has just been weeding in the spring and the fall when you can get, when you can get though. So and for cemeteries, if you contact them, it wouldn't be near as much as the ones we contacted them now.
The lady that was, Mrs. Holmes, that was here this morning, she was concerned about one of those cemeteries. It's an eighty-three plot. We have, we have one that is back, it's a verb that used to be done weekly, it's a hundred and fifty graves and we only have it down for spring and fall, so we're going to have to cover that somehow. It's a big cemetery. It's over an acre.
Well, I'm, I'm just curious about the, about dropping it out, I mean, for us to be out of that business.
It would be probably a good idea.
Barton, did the commissioners, do we have a signed transfer request anywhere?
Yeah, they did.
You should do.
Okay. Well, it's getting late in the year and I don't want to discourage these volunteers anymore than they already have been. I want to move that we approve this transfer request.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's been moved and seconded and approved that we transfer the funds.
All right, thank you, Madam President. I'd also like to request that if we could have the commissioners expedite their approval of spending so we can get tools ordered and get moving on working in the cemetery.
You approved it.
But I thought we had to come back to you and ask you again to let us spend the money then.
That's what we did.
That's what we did this morning.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You will be due your support.
Well, the only reason is she wants to get out of here. I guess, they'll be, I'll probably record it down with the additional, so I like to keep the additional on once upon a minute so we go back and look for it. State Board of Accounts ask for those every year, it's easier for the fund.
Did you, she would like to keep all the additional together.
But you could go ahead, I'll just record it down there, Dale. Dale, I can just record it down there. I'll just move it when I make minutes, have to move it down with the rest of the additional.
You talking about nine one ones? We'll bring her up now?
Yes, that's okay.
Okay. Under unfinished business, Terry, last week, last meeting, we talked to Terry and tabled it from the May seventh meeting, county line one one equipment. So it's all right, we're going to move that up into unfinished business so we can finish that for Terry.
That was the transfer request for the maintenance agreement for the ERS with the maintenance of all of my radio equipment in the dispatch.
It wasn't a trade, it was an additional.
An additional.
Thank you.
And it was tabled. It's a maintenance agreement for all of my radio equipment, it's something that's always been in place. I realize that maintenance agreements are costly, but this one we need, we've always had it.
Is this something that's normally in the budget ahead of time or something?
Yeah, we didn't know, it's in there, but we didn't know exactly how much it was going to be this year, so.
Is it more this year than it was last year, Terry?
Yes, it always goes up because your equipment gets older.
Because what?
Your equipment gets older.
And what's the, hold on, dollar?
Ten thousand one twenty-eight.
Ten thousand?
We did not have a, we didn't know the exact amount on that either because the first year, basically it was, most of the radio equipment was covered underneath the manufacturer warranty because that was when we got our new radios. So that was only a year of warranty on that, so that's why it's more this year. One of the reasons. If you don't have a maintenance agreement and anything would happen with any of the equipment that's at the tower or in the radio site, you're going to be paying a tech hourly and, and it's going to be a nightmare. So a maintenance agreement has it where they have a certified tech that is to respond within two hours. There's just all kinds of different stuff. Parts are to be to us within a certain amount of time, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five. And that was all stuff that was discussed when we purchased the radio equipment.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Something that we pretty much need to?
Yeah. Absolutely.
I'll move to approve the additional request from nine one one department.
Second. Second.
Mike Wenna?
Additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you.
Terry?
Yes.
While you're here, if this doesn't put you on the spot.
State Road forty-four will not be open until, at the earliest in the morning.
Is State Road forty-four shut?
Yeah. At the earliest, it may be open tomorrow.
That wasn't what I was going to put you on the spot about. Could you, could you please explain to the council the situation we're in with the grant that we thought we had for the Everbridge contract?
With the Everbridge, which is the emergency notification system that we have went into, this will be our third year, in the past, we were able to receive a grant from, a five thousand dollar grant from the Health Department. They were unable to do that this year. We did have to purchase some additional backend members, which we had proved and everything under the assumption that EMA, Emergency Management, had secured a grant through, I believe it was the Indiana Department of Homeland Security, don't stick me to that, but it was a grant that was going to cover the emergency notification system for this year. The invoices were coming in in February. Basically, the money has never been, has never came, right, Debbie, according to what?
I asked Adrian about it last week when you're trying to find money to pay it. And he said, well, I talked to him at the state, I'll call him again and that's, I don't know whether it has or hasn't been applied or, I don't know.
Yeah, I was wondering, I mean, what he had told me then was that he had had, received a grant for it and then that the money would go to the auditor's office and then it was out of his hands, but it hasn't came to the auditor's office. So, so the invoices from February, it's a little bit more than what I had budgeted because we did purchase those additional members, so that is there waiting to be dealt with.
Okay, Adrian did indicate that he had secured eighteen thousand dollar grant.
Yeah, I believe that was the amount, eighteen thousand. So I, you know, and then he had told me too that we needed to just pay for it locally that the money hasn't, and that was after you guys had talked to him, it was one day last week. So, so basically that, I mean, however you guys want me to deal with that, I'll be back here next month.
Well, if, if the grant, if the grant money comes through, we'll just reimburse your fund is the only way I know to do it because we had.
But I believe I'm going to have to ask for an additional or I think a transfer.
A transfer.
I've got the additional and transfer confused on the one, the radio one in this one, so.
Yeah, you.
But the money was budgeted, but it was a little bit more because I did have to purchase the additional.
Debbie, do we have a copy of what's been sent in?
The grant? I can look, but I typically don't, I don't know.
Somebody have a copy?
Remember signing that?
I don't.
I mean, there's different, there's different things that he asked for. I mean, I remember that performance grant that, that goes in annually, but I don't know that I remembered this one.
I think I saw.
Somebody call the state?
I was looking back in some notes and I saw you approved two grants and I think one of them was that eighteen thousand dollar grant.
But, yeah, what he gets to reimburse from, for his salary is that much too, so I'm, I'm unclear about, about which one. You would probably have to ask Adrian for sure. But he did say, well, he, that he would call up to the state and then, you know.
But that invoices, I mean, that, that's been pending since February.
That's his.
And we used the emergency notification system this morning for our citizens with the.
Well, that's why I wanted to go ahead and get it paid because if we waited until July to get something done or ask for an additional or something, then, you know, their yard didn't want to turn it off.
Terry, is there a chance that you could ask Adrian for a copy of the grant that was sent in?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I mean, I've asked, you know, he just said that once the, the money was be deposited and then it was pretty much out of his hands was what he told me, so, but yeah, I'd be more happy to make contact with him.
I think we need to paper trail on that grant.
I think we need a paper trail on that grant.
Do what?
We need a paper trail on that grant.
Well, I could ask him. It's my department.
I'll look through what I have for us and see.
Debbie, can you call the state and ask where the money is?
I guess I could.
Would you do that, please?
We have a copy.
Yeah, I think we need a paper trail too.
And then you can look up, will next meeting be enough time to go ahead with the additional for what, what it's going to cost more than what you had in the budget?
It should, we transferred money into that line item and I've been in contact with them because, like I said, that invoice was February. I mean, told them that we were waiting for a local, that we were getting grant money. So I've been in contact with them for that. So they haven't shut it off, but we're, we're in debt to them now. I mean, we should already be paying for the service.
We, we checked with the court today, I believe.
Yeah, the transfer, so I believe it's paid. So I, you know, like Debbie said, probably if we get the grant money, just reimburse that line item, we'll be fine, so. I mean, that money was budgeted just in case, you know, we couldn't, but like I said, it was a little bit more due to us purchasing those additional members.
Now that you've gotten us all hooked on the emergency notification system, we don't want to shutting it off, shutting it off.
Yes, yes. If the citizens would just learn to listen to the messages, we say what they need to do, like this morning, we sent it out and my dispatch center, you know, we're busy. We have, we're busy. There's two people in there and they were bombarded by calls by people that did not listen to the message, you know, what's going on, what's going on? So we just, you know, are still trying to educate the public about that, so.
It works good. I got notified four times this morning.
You what?
I got notified four times this morning.
You must have a lot of, did you confirm them? Because if you confirm it, it stops.
I gave you an opportunity to confirm them. I hit the prompts and it didn't give it to me.
Well, there was two different messages.
Because I know, I know you've said it before, to confirm it and it will stop.
Yeah, I did send two of them. One was an opt-in on the road closing and the second one for the evacuation was an emergency one. Whether you were signed up or not, you should have gotten that one in a one-mile radius from Third Street. And then you got the road closing, which would have been an optional sign up for that.
Well, your notification this morning got me out of it.
Yeah, got, yeah.
Congratulations, though. But I didn't mind. But I, thanks for going through that thing with the grant, Terry, because I wanted to, you're in a better position to explain what's going on there than I, and I wanted the council to understand. If you have to come back next month for either an additional appropriation or a transfer to pay this bill that we owe Everbridge, it's because of the snafu that we have with the $18,000 grant that no one knows where the money is is the reason for it. And I have no explanation for it. And I don't know if Adrian Ellis knows.
I don't know. I mean, I came and got it approved and that was, you know, under the, you know, he was having the grant. He was here that one day, so.
And if you don't mind, one more question along that same line. I think we all got mail about the state E911.
The meeting that was the other day.
The meeting and the approval. The state is proceeding with the four different major wireless carriers to approve text to 911 by 2014. Why do you?
It was a statewide meeting. Currently, we are developing the abilities to be able to text to and from 911. Not public knowledge, but Fayette County does have the technology right now. We are one of the leaders in it. There are approximately 10 to 15 counties in the state that have that capabilities now. A lot of it is due to the deaf and hearing impaired. That's, you know, that's why we're focusing on it a lot. Within the next six months, that will be fully deployed and then you'll see a lot of pubet about it. Right now, it's new to my dispatchers, it's new to, it's new technology. You only have one carrier that is on board right now. There's a lot of different issues with it, such as if I am in a roaming area that is not Verizon, which is my carrier, they may not be on board yet to have that technology. So that's why it's kind of under wraps right now and it doesn't work everywhere. So, but right now, technically, it works in Fayette County. So, but we don't want that out yet. But now it's out, but here in six months, within six months, it will be fully deployed, so. So it should not cost us very little money, if anything, because it does go through our 911 system. The only thing that I will probably come and ask some money for is some more out of public education to educate the public on it, so.
Perhaps it's something for the, you won't know enough by the time the county fair comes around?
Yes, I will. Yes, I will.
I think that's a very effective way of reaching out.
We, this kind of neck of our little surrounding counties, we're all pretty good. Wayne County is actually a test site for it, very close with that 911 director there and we have the technology here. We've had it actually since January, but I've cut that under wraps because it's not fully deployed yet, so. But if you do text to 911 in Fayette County, we will get it in our 911 center. But if you're somewhere that doesn't, you'll get a kickback message that says that it's not available.
We'll look to, we'll look forward to hearing it officially.
Yeah, yeah. Within six months, you should, it should be fully deployed.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business. Mark, the county highway, are you, is there anything else you want to? Next item, library board appointment. I think, Dale, do you want to speak to this? Is this, this is your position?
That's the seat on the library board that I presently hold and it's council's decision whether or not to reappoint me. I'm just finishing up a partial term there that Beth Butch vacated in February 2011. So that time, the term expires at the end of this month. I've been pretty much involved with the library operation. I enjoy the work, don't mind doing it. I'm willing to stay if you're willing to send me back. I'll make a motion to make.
We moved to the second that we reappointed.
Mark, you didn't want to bite for the position?
He wants.
I thought maybe Russ would want it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Excuse me.
Excuse me.
Could I ask for a roll call vote so that I can recuse myself from the voting on this? Legally, I'm not allowed to vote on this.
Debbie?
Okay. Councilman Winter?
Yes.
Councilman Wolf?
Yes.
Councilman Seidel?
What was that again?
Are you voting to reappoint Dale?
Oh, no. Are you serious?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Councilman Plumb?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
I shall note that you abstained.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion approved. Dale, thank you. We appreciate your serving and enjoy hearing the updates.
Come and visit us at the library sometime, Russ.
Next item on the agenda, Soil and Water Conservation District. David Caldwell, he has an interesting-looking show and tell.
Now you're going to find out who baked these cakes. I'm Dave Caldwell with the Soil and Water Conservation District. This is Colt Vanatta, he's the soil and water, or he's the conservationist with NRCS.
NRCS.
NRCS. I lose track of the.
What's your name?
Colt Vanatta.
My wife is here to drag me off if I get silly and I'll get, we'll get to the show and tell here in a second. Why I'm here is that a year ago, you made some tough decisions and among them was to, we were the only entity in the county that got completely eliminated for funding. And this is starting not to sound like I'm here to yell at you, but I'm not. About 60 years ago, my father was in a public service position in this county and he made, he made a pretty controversial decision that led to a lot of recoil and, and public, public hollering, but it was the right decision. It was something that had to be done. And if our gas tank's getting empty and you're the ones that decided to take your foot off the pedal and you knew that would have some recoil too, so I'm not here to yell at you about doing what you had to do. What I would like to do is see if it's helped show you something I didn't do last year and should have, it's helped show you that, that unlike Solomon, I think possibly we could split the baby on this and there's a way that, that you could possibly see that the Soil and Water District is, is an important factor in the county and that we're deserving of some support. So that's part of why we're here. I want to show you the demonstration we have here is to help show you one of the things that's very important to the county in the long run. Colt has done this demonstration a few times and if you wouldn't mind, just tell us what we're going to be looking at, Colt.
Okay, these are two soil samples, are the exact same soil type taken here within Fayette County. The only different thing is the management that's done on them. Soil health is the biggest thing that we're working with right now, trying to promote reducing our inputs and energy into the soil and reducing the erosion and the pollution that winds up in our water streams and eventually winds up in the zone of hypoxium, the Gulf Coast. But these are both rustle soil types, which is the predominant soil type in the county, probably 60 sub percent. This is a no-till system where you see the amount of residue on the surface and it does have a cover crop that's been sown into it. This is what we would call a reduced tillage system where they go in and they would work the ground more frequently and you see there's less residue on the surface. So this test will take equal amounts of water, dump them at the same time into these two pans and these are the rainfall simulators, which have holes punched evenly in the bottoms of it. They come down through here, hit the soil surface and what you find winds up in here would be what would run off in the field to another location. And then what winds up in these would be what infiltrates the soil and winds up below surface in our crop fields or whatever land use may be.
Anybody got hay down? We're going to make it rain here.
Yes, I do. Actually do, I'm up there.
I do too.
It was supposed to get veiled this season, no.
Good luck.
If only the rain would go that evenly in Fayette County.
Yeah, we can't simulate dropping from 500 feet here. The ceilings are high. This will take a little while to see what it's going to do and in fact, it'll dribble for longer than, I think you'll withstand to hear me rattle on, but we've been farming in Fayette County, this is a bicentennial, so we've been farming in this county for 200 years. And most of those years, it's been conventional tillage. And I grew up plowing and dragging and disking, open ground, and we had a lot of erosion. A lot of the best parts of Fayette County are in the Gulf of Mexico right now. We need to stop it. And part of what we do with Soil and Water Conservation District is to promote programs that can help do that. There's a lot to learn about cover crops. A lot of people are scared of cover crops, but the important factor about them isn't just that they slow down erosion, they'll help retain moisture, they'll help build up soil health like Colt is saying, and they'll help build our soil back. We've lost a lot of soil, you can't avoid it. Gravity is going to win, but we can build it back by using this kind of techniques. And they're still under development to some extent. The people who farm my property are scared of using cover crops because you've got to, you've got to deal with it when you're planting, but there's ways around that. The soil here that's in the cover crop comes from some Steve, Steve Woolley's farm. Steve's been cover cropping for a long time. He is a, he's on our board and he's a, just last year, he got a state award as a river-friendly farmer. He does this and he knows how to do it and his soil's in pretty good shape and, and actually increasing in value. We've got to stop losing Fayette County and we can't do anything about what industry does or what businesses do here, but, but one thing we've got is soil and what we're talking about is keeping it. Colt has told me that the funds for things like, like cover crops, the public funds, the federal, state funds for things like cover crops are much harder to get this year than they had. We've heard all that, we just heard about a grant that maybe been denied or something else, so not an uncommon thing. One of the things that we're doing with what budget we have, the major part of it is going to go to a cover crop incentive this year to try to keep interest up on doing this kind of thing. It's hard to do. It costs money to plant the seed, it costs extra work to plant in the, in the cover crop, but it's worth it and we need, that's part of what our, we feel our charge is to help the farmers in Fayette County go on, go on with that. We've got, we've got capable and advanced farmers in Fayette County. In 2009, we, there's a thing called a Tillage Transact that Colt works with where he goes around and evaluates the type of tillage and coverage on all the fields after planting, shortly after planting. We're about ready to do that again this year. Does it every two years. In 2009, about 57% of the, of the crops that were planted appeared to have been on what we would call no-till type conditions, which is a good thing. No-till is good rather than conventional tillage. In 2011, it was 76%. So that's, I think that's a good advance and that shows that our farmers are progressing. Cover crops, another step past that and it's a hard step, a big step, but we need to take it. That's one of the things I think that I hope you'll see that the Conservation District is important for. There's some other things we do. We're supporting some youth activities like the Envirathon and Ag Day. Have any of you ever been to Envirathon or Ag Day? Okay, but you know, you think that's a place where you get to see the kid, how, that the kids are getting smart and all that, but if you go and attend the sessions, you'll learn stuff. They're, they're not, this isn't coloring book type, type material. It's really good material. And Ag Day is pretty advanced. It's also, some of the well we're supporting and we are part of what supports that. Another program we're initiating this year is domestic water testing and that's already been done in the Health Department and I'm talking to them about how we can, how we can improve the knowledge of that and get more people to test the water. I think some people are scared of having their water tested out in the country because they think that that test will come back on them and somebody will come in and say they got to, they got to go to town to go to the bathroom or something. So we're going to make sure they know that it's, it's private, it's their own information. What we want that to lead to then is some, after people have tested their water and found out how it is, to some updating on how to improve their septic system if they found out it's needed. Not to impose that they've got to do it, but just so that they have the knowledge that they need to do it. That's part of the Clean Water Indiana approach that the Conservation District needs to push. We're doing, if y'all want to, if y'all want to have a play day sometime in August, we'll do the whitewater canoe cleanup where we float down the river and pick up trash. That's always fun and we have hot dogs after that. We're going to have a Forester Wildlife and Basin Plant Tour in October on a farm in Osie Township in October. Another thing we're doing is a rain barrel program. I don't know if you've heard of that, but if you want to look at one, you can go right out the door and look to your right and we've got a rain barrel set up here at the courthouse. And by the way, we're having a workshop on it this coming Saturday if, I'll hand you all of these up when we're done, but if you want to come to Gillum's on Saturday at eight, at 10 o'clock, we'll talk about how to make rain barrels. You might think that's kind of frivolous, you know, 55-gallon drum, that doesn't really save much water, but in fact, there's times when it can be very useful, like right here at the courthouse. The ladies in the Health Department take care of that flower garden at the base of the steps and up to now, they've had to drag a hose 150 feet from down here by the extension office all the way up there, across the steps, across the sidewalk to water the flowering. With this setup here, all they have to do is turn it on. As long as we, as long as we have 200 gallons of water, there's four barrels there. But, so where it is useful is in places where it's hard to get water to. Again, a 20 by 20 garage roof will, will catch 240 gallons of water in a one-inch rainstorm, so what does 55 gallons do? But it does help if it's a place where you can't get water very easily. There's some residents in the south part of this county that don't have good wells. They have water hauled in. This could be useful to them. So it doesn't conserve much water, but I think it's, it helps draw attention to conservation water. So we're doing that. Another thing we do that, that runs through our department is Rule 5. Another thing we do that runs through our department is Rule Five and MS Four reviews. We just got one on our desk today for something on Grand Avenue from twenty-fourth to twenty-ninth, I think it is, for renovation of the sewer system. So we do review those. So we're, anyway, that's stuff we do. We think it's important. We need a staff person. Of course, last year, we lost her because she simply couldn't be funded and again, I understand that, you had to do something. But we need to have someone there part of the time so that when people try to contact us, even if it's only half the day, whatever, if they try to contact us, they'll get an answer or they'll stop hauling. We need a person there so that we, we wanna have a water test kit, people can come there and get it. If they wanna apply for a cover crop application that we're gonna help support, they'll have a place to go to get it. Right now, you can't be sure if the office will be open. Colt is in that office, but he's out in the field a lot, so sometimes it's just plain lockdown, nobody's there to answer the phone. We need to have someone there part of the time, at least part of the time. So I guess maybe I'm a little early, Dale, if you're starting your budget meetings tomorrow, but I'm here right now, so I'm telling you.
No such thing as being too early, David.
Okay, well, I know you're tackling it early and it was a big, big thing last year and I understand you wanna approach it now. What are we doing though to help ourselves instead of coming here and begging? We're looking for local sponsors. This thing is gonna be done at Gillums and they're helping sponsor the rain barrel program, so they're helping chip in. We've had a number of other businesses that have been real good to help with things. I'm talking to other counties about pooling resources, about a way that we can, we can get together and cover this, but I can do that a lot more effectively if I know I've got something to throw into the pot. So that's why I hope we can work out here, at least find a way to split the baby and find some little ground and get a person there to help us keep going with things we need to do to keep Fayette County in Fayette County instead of built for Mexico. So that's it. That's it. Sorry, these aren't refreshments, it's dirty, but that's all I got then. Please come to, if you want, come to the rain barrel workshop to, Saturday at ten.
David, I've got one question for you. Does Soil and Water, does this Soil and Water Conservation District promote things like gray water systems?
That was, that's what we could, that's what I'm hoping our water testing will lead to, gray water systems and improved septic systems, because I'm probably pretty guilty with my own septic system at home. I don't, I'm not sure I wanna find out, but I know what you mean by gray water system to separate that.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of areas in this county that has clay soils that have to have a much larger septic system and finger system because of the condition of the soil where a gray water system could eliminate the need for that added expense and in the long run, it would actually, it saves money, puts better water back in the ground and helps your wells and everything else. Now, I, I don't know of anyone in this county that actually has an operating gray water system. And I just think it's an overlooked technology that people really haven't been made aware of.
Do you think, do you think people know that that exists right now or does it need to be promoted to and to they could even recognize that it's a need?
There might, there might be something that we could possibly do to promote gray water systems for out in the county through their area planning commission and building permits and that sort of thing or septic approvals and all that, but people, I don't think enough people are aware of what the advantages to a gray water system.
Well, that's what the water testing thing we wanna initiate or initiating, I would hope would lead to, but maybe we don't need to let it lead to, maybe we can get on it right now. I'm okay with doing that.
Yeah, well, I'm not, I'm not giving you an assignment, I was just asking the question whether you, you know, your district worked on things like that.
That, we do work on things like that, but we haven't worked on that. And again, the water testing will lead to improved septic systems, we could include the gray water, but there's nothing wrong with starting right now.
Yeah, see, that's one, that's one of the, that's the reason that the town of Orange is dying right now because they don't have access to clean potable water. That's Orange, the problem that Orange has and that's the reason Orange is dying.
Well, was that not some, I mean, it's not, Milton is a Fayette County, but was that not some of the issues that they had back some years ago that required that? Again, the proactive that perhaps through the area plan commission and the Health Department, they both go out and give information about wells or check wells or, you know, they're having to be checked, so, you know, something right then when they're trying to make those choices might help the education effort.
I didn't realize how bad it was at Orange. I know some areas have that problem, but that is exactly the kind of thing we need to be working on.
It is a serious problem out in that part of the county, for sure.
Well, you know, if they put a cover crop on that soil, they'll help open it up.
Good advice.
Good advice, good advice.
Yeah, you can see the clarity of the water that came through. This was the tillage and then this was the no-till. We didn't see quite as extreme an effect because other clay soils that we talked about dried out just enough where there was a little bit of cracking around the edge where it didn't keep moisture, so we didn't get as much runoff as typical, but this soil a lot more and then the water that comes off of it, as you can see, is substantially cleaner than what is typically done in a tillage just, it's basically just the living organisms. I guess think of it as if you live in tornado alley. Tillage would be like a tornado for microorganisms that comes through and tears up their house where they wanna live there or where they wanna go to an area that's not disturbed. So they go to an area and earthworms create aeration and channels in the soil. You want about fifty percent airspace within your soil so water and air can move through it. And when we do tillage, we compact it and we take out all the roots that have died off and left channels, microorganisms, holes, homes, burrows, and then that destroys the aeration within the soils. Whereas the no-till system helps maintain it and then the cover crops with their rooting add food for microorganisms and extra root channels that die off and create more space and allow crops to burrow into their root channels and continue to go deeper in search of more water nutrients.
Do you have any data or literature about how much over time it improves the soil? I mean, do your yields go up based on how many years you've done cover crops or no-till?
Yeah, there is research that's been done. Ohio State do, I've done a lot of research. Typically within a no-till system, the soil isn't conditioned, so it takes longer to gain the benefits. You may see a reduction in say yields at first, but you're reducing your inputs. Cover crops help speed the process along, but you will see a lag for a little while. Basically, it didn't take one year to get our soil into a tillage system like this, so it won't take one year to correct it all, it has to be built back up, but there have been researchers done by a lot of the universities and publications out there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dale, if you want me to show up on a Wednesday, please let me know.
Okay, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, additional appropriations.
By the present, may I ask?
Yes.
Are, we wanting to address the issue with the county house garage or is that table or?
There was no additional or anything put in for it so far, but.
Oh, we come asking for some discussion about whether we're gonna proceed with this garage or not. I haven't heard anything. So are you wanting to just drop the, drop the idea or think we don't need one or, I mean, it's a, it's a condemned or could be condemned?
It could be condemned, yes, I would agree.
So are we not gonna discuss this tonight or?
Well, I'll just say one thing, one thing that I have a problem with putting money into a new building down there, in my opinion, is the way the condition of the grounds down there look. They don't, they look very unkept, in my opinion. When you go by the Highway Garage, Wayne County up on forty-four, forty, it's well-maintained, it's mowed, it just looks clean, everything looks organized. Down here, it just doesn't look organized to me. And that's one of the problems I have. I wanna make sure we put the money into a building like that and we know it's gonna be taken care of and things are organized. That's one of my big objections to putting money into a new building.
Well, whatever opportunity you had, size, put money into your building.
You can.
You know, when I talk to you, I thought that you were stupid, that that's the line for us to take.
Well, I mean, that's the logical thing to do. If you, if you try to go in and like they say, you know, try to patch that thing, it's still gonna, you can't make a purse out of a thousand, they say. And you can replace those holes, but you still, there's a roof condition, it's rusty, very bad, so it's either gonna be replaced or it's gonna be painted. So it's, if you put money in, if you're just throwing money after something bad, in my opinion. So we have no, to me, we have one option, that building, new building. That's my opinion and I don't know that much about the Q cap fund and you say that that's basically all we can use it for.
Well, you, Dale, you can tell, Dale, you can address what the Q cap is for.
It's traditionally, it's used for what it says, Q capital improvements and.
At the end of this year, you said we were gonna have about nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, something like that, in, at the end of this year?
We've used a little more over the last couple of years to, to upgrade our computer equipment that we had to upgrade to bring them up to Windows Seven machines. So we've put some more in that and we're about done with that. So next year, that appropriation should drop.
We got that most of the rest for the year. And this year, you got revenues on six to seven coming into us, so you would guess that next year would be probably about seven.
I did get a thing from, just looking at some other things, Billy Wiesing gave me a thing last month. He's got approximately things that he sees that needs to be done in the jail, about sixty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars it would amount to. I think, and that does not include the showers, which I think has been done.
The showers has been done.
Those are done.
So that's sixty thousand, that's all we got. That one, I say all our buildings are in good shape with the jail's been, the roof's been put on, jail removed, courthouse has moved. And, you know, the garage is one of the buildings that we're in charge of maintaining, so it really shouldn't be a stepchild. So we've got everything else in good shape but the garage and it's time, it's time to address that situation. And if, you know, if you agree with me what you said you do, that the way to fix the problem is fill a steel building with a steel gun counter, then that's what we need to do. We've got a problem addressing the landscape and how the yard looks down. That's fine, we can take care of that, but we still have to figure out the problem.
Has anybody thought about looking into some of the outbuildings up at Visteon and moving in some of them? Because there's that barrel storage building, which is a pretty good sized building, I know they got a couple of those up there. Is that, has that ever been looked into?
It has been looked into. Most people that come in looking at Visteon do not want partners up there in that building. I can tell you that people that's coming in, just looking at the building now or looking at the whole building, there is tenants up there.
Yes, there is some, yes.
But, but that's not on a permanent basis, they wanna be sure that it's not a permanent basis because they're kinda using the whole thing.
Okay, then surely I gotta comment to you. You'd mentioned before, one of the things you thought to save money was to combine the city street department and the highway garage. That's one of the things you thought you would like to look into. Is that, I don't see where that's feasible, but what would you think of that?
You've gotta get two groups of work together.
Really, yeah.
I've talked to Jay about it. Jay thinks that, well, he can address that, that the things the county highway do is a lot different from what the city do. If we could've got the Crown Building up there, it'd been right across the street, there'd be a lot swapping back and forth, we could've done something like that.
And Mark, I, like Barton suggested earlier, we have talked about moving up the road. We talked about the Green Building not maybe being twenty-two feet. We didn't have the height that we needed to work on and really large enough, but further out, the building recently occupied by CNC Logistics, that there's a lot of space in there and you could probably put every single piece of equipment for the Highway Garage in that building, but there's a cost associated with that.
Okay, what would be that cost?
The rental. I'm not sure, have we found who the person was that we could go look at that?
Yes, we have and I'm, I'm gonna talk to him, I'm expecting him to, we get, it's gonna be a problem there, but it's such a big building, you can't use the whole thing. You know, how do you light up what section you're gonna hold? I mean, you wanna know what's there. We don't wanna be in a rental business and most people don't, you know, the community is fact, they don't want, they don't want somebody else in there with them, you know. I think we think the most feasible thing would be to build your building. I say the Crown Building was gonna cost quarter million dollars just to fix the roof. Plus you have to do some other sort of things. Any game would work, we had, we did that and we got the ground to do with, to the vacation. And I looked at all these cars over there, way north, you can't, I quote them people and they don't wanna do anything with that. Just like, I've been around looking, seeing what to do with it. I haven't had any of that, so if I come down and put it down where we are now, we can either put it, tear it up, we can put it there, we can put it back up, we can put it on the north end, but if you're not discussed other day, probably would be better where it is or back, so if you're decided to be facing east or west.
And another comment along that line, I think, you know, Barton has talked to Jay and Jay and I have talked, and I think there have been instances, you know, for years, but most recently in the last six months, where the county and the city have helped each other out, where one has a piece of equipment available to do a particular project or where the other, and I think they've both benefited from that.
We've caught some flack from doing that, but I still think it's the right thing to do. You know, it's all taxpayer, I mean, we got a piece of equipment that they don't have, we can take it up there and do a little job for them or the other way around, tore out this sidewalk over here, they go there, put them, we tore that out. We didn't have to bring the back door, the jackhammer or whatever. It'd be one thing we could, we could.
Don't you guys have an agreement with them, an interloper agreement with the city to do stuff like that?
We don't have any, we just, we just get along and somebody needs something, we'll do it.
Mark, I think what you guys are asking us to do, or what it sounds like you're asking us to do, if we approve you to go ahead and look at an architect or advertise for an architect or whatever you do, you wanted us to commit tonight that we're gonna build that garage, is that right?
I wouldn't, I'd like for you to commit that you are willing to spend some amount of money to build a garage, you know, when, when it's, when if our architect, if he's all this up, figured for your, you know, I don't expect this, you just write a blank check so you probably don't want to get it. God, no. But I, but I don't see any reason to go into all the other, have these architects come in and get their quality piece, get approved from, what they're gonna charge to do something if you really don't wanna do it. I think that's within the gut, that needs any attention and it needs attention.
It's needed attention for twenty years since it's been built. And it's one of the. And it's one of the, it's one of the things that the county has never done, and Jackson can speak for the jail, we never put any money in any budget for maintenance or anything upkeep, and never push it. That's the reason our courthouse fell down, that's the reason our jail got in bad shape, that's the reason why that highway department's in bad shape. Because, and it's got to change.
Well, that's right, you know, you build it, everything wears out, and then...
And when I was county commissioner, I tried to get you guys to kick money into that garage there to fix it up some, and we had, we had Flum down there drawing up stuff for us, and we could never get the money from the council.
It was really not worth fixing for us.
Well, it was six or seven years ago. Well, Flutterman, when Tom Flutterman was there, he started doing some things to fix it up, and he was correct, and he was slowly taking out some of the wood beams, he's putting in steel columns, he was slowly changing that building over to a steel structure, and then, of course, he's gone now. That's something that can be done, but, you know, the end result, you spent just as much money probably as...
As I would do.
Yeah, but you do it over a period of years, so I, you know, isn't worth it, no, probably not.
Councilman Flum, I would agree with you about the way it looks, but that can be addressed through an architectural, you know, that all can be addressed.
Well, well...
But we need, but we need...
No, I'm not talking about the building, the way it looks, I'm just talking about the grounds.
But that can be addressed through landscaping needs and so forth. I agree with you that it's not the best looking place, but I think that can be addressed through the...
Oh, yeah, we're doing all the, we're mitigating landscape, but they care...
I'm just saying, we can address that through, through the planning process.
And like you said, there is, of all the other buildings, the rest of them are in...
There is not a great chance that we can get them, you know, the jail's twenty years old, it's went through that twenty year cycle with the new roof, we just, we just, we just haven't put the equipment in the kitchen, and Carney Billy, when I asked him just last month, everything was, everything's pretty good shape.
Those things up at the animal shelter, are they pretty good up there?
The same piece he has, he has natural paint. We got a, we got a...
A new vehicle.
Well, we got a new furnace up there, the furnace went, we haven't put the furnace in, that is...
Had to fix the drain, he had to fix that drain up there, too.
Yeah, so everything that's been, that we know about has been fixed, yeah.
So Jay, you would, you have a present, furnace you use in the shop is a...
You use waste oil furnace.
Okay.
So we have a backup that's gas, but we've got a waste oil furnace we're using, we've got a brand new, it's still in the crate, the solid block.
Okay, is that, would that be sufficient to heat the garage, the new garage that you moved on?
Yep.
So you could just move all that equipment into the...
Another thing we've got down, you can just, you have one piece of equipment in there to put on top of it.
Yes, that's true.
You know, if you can get a little bit of the garage a little bigger, but another thing you could look at is all the other vehicles we have around here go through, who of the people take it through. The city, the city maintains their own vehicles. The highway department for years had two mechanics, and for whatever reason, that's down to one. Well, that has the equipment, a lot of times you need two mechanics to work on it, so if you was doing all your, all your other vehicles, that gets you a lot closer being before the hard to mechanic.
Anybody else got any comments or thoughts?
I think they need to be putting in there the building.
So the question he had right now, are we willing to commit five hundred thousand dollars to a new building out of Q cap fund? And maybe at the end of the year, we still maybe have, let's say, four hundred thousand left in Q cap?
The other, the other option you have, if you want to build it, you can borrow the money, that'd be, it makes sense to me, if you have the money, to go ahead and pay for the building. Just last week, you could borrow the money for a five-year fixed, ten-year term for two point ninety-nine. But that just adds, that just adds the cost if you build that right.
Well, and I agree with Barton, you know, why begin the process if we're not prepared to go the rest of the way? I think we all know, this has been on the discussion, every budget. And it's going to come up again in August when we tackle the budget, so...
Building's not going to get any better, you know, it's shot down, so this is where we want to invest it, correct the bottom situation with us.
I don't think, you know, we don't have enough requests for a specific appropriation to submit for approval. I don't know, Debbie, have you used an intent, or is there, is there some kind of an approved parliamentary procedure that we can show Barton?
Well, you know, you could, you know, basically, I guess, just, just do a straw vote to see how you think you would vote, and then bring back an appro, an appropriation. If this was going to be fast-tracked to get done by the end of this year, then you'd have to do an additional appropriation from this year, then you've got it that, you know, straddles between two years, you know? You'd have to appropriate part in one year, part in the other.
I got a question for Jay first. The building that you were talking about was a seventy by three hundred.
It is.
Now, that will house everything you've got.
It's a hundred feet longer than what we've got right now.
But it's deep.
Deeper, yeah, it's deeper, so in the winter time, they got the plow, the trucks, they can back them in their apartment there. And they're not sitting half in and half out, the way they do right now. This building we've got right now, if you get all the trucks under the roof, and they got a plow on them, half of them are sticking out. It's just, you can't load them and be ready, because if the snow's on them, and just back in and freezing them up, then you can't use them. That's mainly for the winter time.
Okay. Part of it's going to be open, part of it will be closed. Is everything, will everything be in the open part? Can you get it? Okay.
I got a picture. This is what I showed you. You got it down there. If you look at that, this is the open part. I just put that on there, it'll be all open here. Yeah, this is the garage area and the office area from here.
Okay, yes.
And that's a hundred and forty-eight feet back here on the open part, and you've got a hundred and, a hundred and fifty, two feet over here. And that gives you plenty of bays to work on, anything you want to work on. Winter time, you can park vehicles in here, your small trucks in here, plows on, you'll have plenty of room. And everything else in there, because that's a lot of problem right now, we've got everything sitting outside. Well, I think we can get in there in our trucks. And you can't get next to that fence up there in front and mow with it, unless you move everything out to do it. And I've had people that's mowing, when they come in with extra time, being eaten, you grab the mowers, you go out there and try to mow. You can't hardly keep up with it that way, without somebody there doing it, unrepheasable bases.
And you get to set up five bays.
Yeah. Well, this here is the sign room, right here.
Okay.
He is normally out here, in a little office himself, here, he's here, and his truck comes in here, and he's got all the stuff here.
Okay.
That way, he's inside where it's warm, he can work on signs and stuff in there.
Okay.
He actually takes this much off of it, and I guess this is all garage.
Now, this, your doors aren't too...
Yeah, well, you don't really need that many doors, you could cut it down to three doors and get by with it. With a lot of they've got room to manipulate in there, you know, with whoever in there.
Okay. Jay, how much of this will be heated?
Just the garage area and the offices, that's it. Rest of it's going to have an open front of it.
So basically, a half of it.
Yeah, about half of it.
See, the building I got down there is a shop, but it's not it. Well, is it explained to some extent?
It's a...
If it is, it's very little.
Very little, yeah. Because the waste oil furnace worked pretty hard to keep it up, to keep it warm, it does keep it warm, it keeps it warmer than the gas range does.
So you were talking about getting the high school kids to vocational school.
I had talked about that, about that possibility. My thought was finishing the office, building the offices and the storage building, I've done, we give them a project, and that would save them some on the way to finishing.
Okay, so, in the meantime, if you, if we had to, you'd have to get a trailer to house your office people for a short time, maybe?
Well, you, you could, or if you wanted to put it somewhere where it is, you could tear off the north end where the open...
Right, yeah.
And leave the office there until you've got that, until you've got the office there.
Do you have enough room to tear off the...
You've got a hundred and fifty foot from the north end of the building, the fence. So that gives you enough room to put the whole building there, you can either put it.
Okay, and that'd take you right up to the north front.
Or we could, we could, with Jay, go back to it.
Yeah.
There's room to back it, go back to the shop, and start it right west of where the building starts now, though.
Right.
So there's room to put, like I said, about three places.
And you could build it behind and still have whatever access you need behind it?
Yeah, because we've got, well, we've got our plug mill set back there, because we had to move it over from I M I, so they get steel and stuff over there. But we have room to go around everything back there, you still can get around the building.
Well, this is a major commitment. Without a roll call vote, is it possible to have a roll call comment? A proceed or a stop now? Kind of a...
I've got a question, Shirley. I'd like to direct to Councilman Flum. These buildings are an area of your expertise, you've been down there and inspected this building. How much longer can we kick this can down the road?
It could fall down the bottom. If you get a really bad wind, parts of it could come down. I mean, it could, just like my engineer said. He could, he could condemn it right now, because he's seen it, and because of his ethical reasons that he took his license, he's supposed to, just like we looked, just recently, last week, looked at Carquest Building, some of you know, part of that went down, and we have advised Mr. McDaniels, that needs to be fenced off with construction fence, and let nobody close to that building, because it's, the whole back of that building is unsafe. They haven't done it yet, but we, by letter, have told him that it needs to be fenced off. And because of the danger possibilities, somebody could get, you don't know what's going to go down, you don't know.
I understand.
Sounds to me like there is no kicking of the can.
No, it's, something has to be done. And the question, my, my, my first question was, I want to make sure that we researched any other possibilities, if any other buildings, we sound like you have looked into all of those, and there's really none available. And other than that, we don't really have a choice. I hate to say it, but we don't really have a choice. And we can't use, if the Q cap is supposed to be used for that, then that's what it's there for.
Well, we've got a current balance in Q cap right now of nine hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars.
You also have to consider that what would happen, if something fell down, hurt somebody that was working there, you know?
Exactly.
It needs to be taken care of.
There is probably a high level of liability involved there.
Yeah, that's true, and really, the county is on the hook, because they've been advised that the condition of the building, if it would come down, the insurance could deny, could deny. Because that is...
I'll have a call, straw, pick, vote, whatever. Barton, how much would it cost us to find out how much the building will cost us?
Well, that's, you won't probably not take it, some plans, right?
He's worked with two, two, right, so far?
Right.
Of pre-engineered building companies, and he's getting an estimate of five to six hundred thousand dollar range.
Okay. We don't have...
We don't know until you get your bids in, but that's, you know, that's their kind of best guess deal.
Yeah.
Before they know exactly what we're going to do.
Yeah.
They'd want to build with Jay and those people that size would be, that's kind of their rough case, I'd say.
You could do your own landscaping and...
We can do our own site work.
Site preparation, everything, cutting out costs.
Yeah. What work the highway could do, we can do.
You can demo the existing building yourself.
It's real cheap, but we don't want to cut, cut corners. We're the first person to get that.
To address Councilman Flum's concerns. I mean, we can break lanes, we can plant grass seed, build fences, private fences to block off, you know, things that might be offensive or whatever, we can most have to work ourselves.
So what about the straw vote, or the sense of proceed or stop now?
Yeah, with the consensus of opinion.
Do we have a consensus?
I think we should have a straw vote.
Debbie, could you start at the top again?
Councilman Stroh.
I would advise the commissioners to proceed with this project.
Mr. Winter.
I would support the commissioners and their efforts to secure the garage.
Councilman Wal.
I'll let him look into a new garage. I hate to, this has been going on about a half hour, but I hate to see a half hour end up spending five hundred thousand dollars without looking into it, father. But if we, Mr. Blom says it's dangerous. So how long has it been dangerous?
Well, a good while, a good while.
How long, how long a good while? When?
Well, I see, I went down there a couple of years ago, we took a shovel, just a hand shovel, and shoved it underneath the post completely. It's completely rotted off. And that was just one post, and I know there's other ones that are bad.
That was in the garage area.
That was in the open area, yeah.
Why wasn't nothing done then?
We took, we did what we could do to it, we put some of it, try to help them.
But you know, it always seems like they come in, all at once, it's a national emergency, that we do something like on the jailhouse project, I think we could have saved money on it. I hate to get on the air, but they let one company, because it was a green company, go in there, I think we could have saved money on it, this one will be for bid, if it happens, is that correct? How many different bids are we going to get?
You have to advertise for bids.
Well, we'll get as many as we can, Jay. Well, if, if we do this, we'll get, once we hire, we'll take your growth of plans, and then we'll...
I don't want to sit here and say no, then tomorrow, boat down, three people killed. I'm going to go ahead and vote yes to get the bids, then when it comes time for the money, I'll look at it again.
That's the way I kind of feel, I feel the same way, that I, I don't want to commit to a garage yet, I don't, I, because I'm not sure about Q cap, using our Q cap money.
Okay, about what you can use it for?
Well, I don't know what, I, there's other things I'm sure we can use it for, but I'm not going to sit here and commit for Q cap, spend all our Q cap money when we take, we've spent every, every fund we've got. We took all our money and give it away out of the boat money or rainy day fund, it's gone.
We don't have a rainy day fund.
That's, that's what I'm saying, Parker, it's gone.
Seventeen thousand.
Or whatever it was, what is it?
What's the seventeen? I think it seems like it's a seventeen grand.
Your boat money, if I, if I'm correct, goes directly into the fund, doesn't it? You don't, you don't have a rainy day fund.
Well, whatever, we spent it, so we don't have no really backup funds anymore. And that Q cap is a backup fund, but you guys are telling me, and I'd like to see the, I, I need to see the, the law on that, what that fund can be used for.
Well, I think Debbie did just say that you have asked the state board, council...
Give us a state code on that, and see what else that can be useful. I just can't imagine it's just used for buildings.
Not buildings, but capital, it's supposed to be capital improvements.
Right, all these years that we, we've used it, and now we're using it for capital to build a building for the highway department.
Capital.
What happened to all the funds of the highway department? Don't we have some funds in there, too, that we can use? Huh?
Well, the, the one...
You're running short of minutes here.
The one suggestion I have is that there will be additional money flowing into M B H, which I talked about earlier. And my thoughts were that perhaps some of the materials that we pay for out of local road and street, which probably two hundred thousand a year for gravel and things like that, that maybe we could shift some of that over into M B H, still allowing some extra money in, in the highway department fund, which is funded by M B H monies, which would allow, allow you some extra, some money in local road and street. But I don't know, I just kind of mentioned, I mentioned that to Jay, and I don't even think he started to look yet at his budget for the next year, but that was another, that was another thought.
What does the local road and street bring into your, Debbie?
I don't have that, do you know? I don't have it on top.
Okay. But I won't, I won't commit to all that money coming out of Q cap for that, I won't, I'll be up from it again today.
That's your problem, really.
Sure, and I know...
I think you should find out, you know, what you can use, what you can't use. I think you should find out, you know, what you can use, what you can't use. Or if you think that, do you have a fund money or what's your thing about using it for?
The local road and street or whatever funds the highway got, we need to use what we can out of that. We don't need to take it all out of our Q cap.
So if I understand correctly, you're, you're in favor of garage, you just, you're just, what fund it comes out of is what you're, you have a question?
There's no doubt about we need a garage. We needed a garage 10 or 12 years ago.
Okay.
And we couldn't get it.
The council's in charge of the living. You take it out of whatever funds you want.
Yeah, well, it's about the only fund we have, what we got.
We don't have any funds.
Yeah, we don't have very many funds left.
Okay, try to get all that. Councilman Plum.
I'll go along with it, but I still would like to have a little more research done into the green building to see if that can be used. Because we could, Jay, add a couple of bays on, you know, add to it, to get you that high bay you need for trucks, if that's possible. I mean, that's easy to add that. And I would like to see if the rest is, what, what else would we have to do that though, possibly?
I'd have to take care of the inside of it, see what it's got. Have we done with the ground?
We have the roadblock, we've measured everything, checked everything.
Because I know we have plenty of office space.
I've been in that building. It's, that's got pretty high area.
Well, it was nice to get the Crown building, was it had a lot, we put the bug wheel on a lot. You've got to have some place to put that, because you leave it out there, that's just stealing resolve.
And I think, I know they got a fence and a lot there.
I thought Crown building was so horrible. I thought Crown building was so...
The Crown building is, he found like a green... He talked about the green, you're going to the sand west of it.
They just ran that out.
Yeah, they did.
They just ran that front part out.
Yeah, part of it is, because I was talking to Rudy Fields who owns it, and he said part of it was being...
Pictures, scriptures.
Yeah, he just done, done painting front of that building and, because Mick signs up, so he probably got locked in for a year, wouldn't he be?
You can give it, we have a...
You want to find a building that you can, that you can use? So far I haven't, so far I haven't found one that's, see what we can use. The Crown building we could, but that's, that's sold.
Okay, I know there's other buildings in the old H H Robinson, there's some buildings there. I don't know who's in those now. I know they're big enough, high enough. So I would just like to do a little bit more searching, some of their properties. But other than that, I'll say yes to it because we've got to do something. Proceed.
Councilman Nobby.
Father, can you go ahead and proceed?
Do you want to put your opinion in here?
Me?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe that we need to proceed. I would like, like to, I want to show the rest of the council, the highway department. I've been in the other building, the CNC logistic building, and there's lots of space and lots of ways to block it off. And there's plenty of, of height. The roof is a concern, but you know, again, do you want to lease a building and pay money every year? Or do we want to invest it in our own equipment? So I think we need to proceed. We can't afford to let it fall in.
Barton, is that...
Well, I got kind of a halfway direction. I don't know whether I'm supposed to take another month or two months to try and find a building to buy.
Well, I think AJ helped us.
And then build one, or then...
We have to proceed with the first things first.
Right. So RFQs first, I think, would be the, I'm not a politician.
Well, if, if we are going, if we start to build a building, or do they want me to keep looking for other buildings to get to that? That's what I don't...
Well, right now, you're just going to go out and then look for any, get applications for...
For qualifications.
Qualifications, so that's going to take a little time. In the meantime, we can start looking at the other buildings, doing the whole research.
And I think we have to have, we have to have the information about the cost. Before you can compare either way, before you can do a cost justification. Whether we can lease a place, you know, they've got it halfway leased, maybe that'll make you a good deal for a five-year lease.
I didn't know, you know, I have not considered leasing a building, you know.
I think there's a lot of good to put it close there to the street department.
If you're doing a short-term lease, then four, five years, then go right back where we are now.
I would be interested in lease.
Okay. I think we've given you all we can give at this point. If you've got enough, proceed with the request for qualifications and continue to...
We'll get that done.
And we're going to move on to additional appropriations. County General Prosecutor's Bad Check Fund, I think, $27.50.
That speaks for itself. That's where they take, where somebody pays bad checks, pay into the fund, then they got to get information, take it out of there, so I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Next. County Sheriff Edit, Committee on Development Contracts.
That's me. The, no, no, yeah, well, they left, so I'm going to take this one. That one is really is me. I was looking. County Sheriff Edit, within, within the capital plan, they approved within that second section of it, $30,000 for community development contracts. We are currently paying those out of County General. I would like to move, I would like to put an addition into County Sheriff Edit and save that $30,000 for County General.
Got a question on this $30,000. What's that money used for?
That money, we pay 14,000 of it. We're, we have an interlocal agreement with the city where we pay 14,000, which is a portion of Diana Wright's salary. And then the other 15,000 is paid to EDG.
For?
For community development. It just was community development contract.
We already pay them, don't we?
Well, you pay them the 60,000.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we pay 14,000 on it.
Well, it's in the budget this year, so, in fact, I think we have already paid the 15,000 out this year, to tell you the truth. Can you hold on a second and let me look?
Can we use...
So if you don't approve it, it's going to come out of County General, if a claim has already been paid out on it. See what I mean?
The reason why it is, couldn't we use some of this money for the highway garage?
No, you can't. I think we, that was discussed at the time. We were using it for edit funds for the courthouse, and we have used some on the jail and some on the annex, but...
How's it...
I think that's stretching it.
Be for maintenance, what, maintenance of, how's it fell down AJ?
Jim, I can see where you're getting the verbiage at. It's related facilities with the courthouse.
Right.
That's how it's explained under Section 27. And I think me and Mark have gone around on this one too. I, I don't think a highway garage is a related facility to the courthouse. That wouldn't be my recommendation.
I agree with you.
Hold on a second, let me, where do I have this one?
And in essence, it frees up County General funds. Am I correct?
Yeah, let me, let me see if that's already been paid yet. I think if it had been paid, it was been paid prior to when we went on the new system, because I just have access to the old system here.
I thought our share was 30,000. Yeah. Thirty, our share. He's in.
Just takes me over.
In the meantime, where are we? We have a motion.
We had a motion.
Had a motion.
I made motion to give 15,000.
And I wrote down 14 and 16.
You said 14,000.
It, yeah, it's 15-something. It's 15, it's an odd number. Hold on, it'll come up here.
Whatever comes up for Diane's salary, I'll make a motion for that amount.
No, just 30,000 left.
No. Or half, or half.
Here's, we, we have paid, already paid out the 14,000 out of County General. And to tell you the truth, I think...
For this, for this year?
For this year. We have already paid out the other 15,000 because we made, and this is how I caught it and asked, went ahead and I thought, well, let's go ahead and ask for this, and I won't have to move it. I do believe it all, it has been, the 15,000-something has been paid out of County Sheriff Edit, so let me see. I mean, I think both of those bills have been paid.
And in essence, that, the intent was to pay that from edit funds, which, in, which they were eligible to be paid in order to have the additional funds in County General.
It's going to be their, it's going to be in their, their building or in their...
We've already, we have already paid it this year.
Was that in their, was that in the commissioner's capital plan?
The 30,000 one.
Yes, it was.
We have already paid $15,723 to EDG for community development funding. So...
Devin, why did we, why, kind of refresh my memory, why did we budget 30,000 in the general fund? If our share is only 14...
No, our share was two things. It was 14,000 plus this 15,723. So it was actually 29,723. And I think that 15,723 dates back to when Jo Lisa, who worked for EDG, was doing the grant administrator's job. And then, then Diana got layered in, then she was helping with that. Jo Lisa left, Diana got put in there. I have no idea why the 15,723.
My question, what is, what is Diane's salary for the whole year?
I'm not sure. I'd say somewhere around 30, I think our portion is about half of it.
Yeah, so it's around 30,000 some.
And then the city pays her benefits, her per, if she has insurance through the city.
It used to be, when you was over there, that, that, that department was run by a board. That's on board, and it has some people. Now, somewhere or another, that has got put into the EDG.
I, do you, Shirley, do you know, do they or don't, does the Community Development Board still exist or not? Because...
It is, it comes under the Economic Development umbrella.
Yeah, but Pete Bell told us before he left that there was no board over.
No Community Development Board or no Economic Development?
No Community Development Board.
Right.
I believe that it has come under the Economic Development Board.
I don't understand that when Diana doesn't work for EDG. She works for the city. She is a city employee. She isn't paid partially or anything by EDG.
But partial accounting employee too as well, right?
Well, we pay half of her salary.
Because we pay half of her salary. But it was my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it was my understanding that some of these funds, on these requests for grants, and in particular, it was emphasized this morning on whether or not we pursue this one for the housing, there is a county match or a city match or someone, whether it's an economic development match. And I guess the particulars for each grant request might be different. Who's going to come up with the match? And it was my understanding, and maybe it was wrong, that some of these funds go towards that match, so we are eligible for the funds.
No, I believe that they have been used for that. I don't know.
I need somebody to...
I would, I would say I don't think that's so, but I don't know in recent years.
I need somebody to come in and explain it to us, what, what's going on.
So do we have a motion table?
Well, here's the thing, we can't, it's already been paid this year. So either, we either pay it out of Edit, or I'm going to have, if you don't prove this, then I'm going to have to move everything back. Or we pay half of it out of Edit, and the other's half's going to be paid out of County General. Because it's a, it's a moot issue this year because you approved, you approved it in last year's budget. So the $30,000 is approved in last year's budget out of County General. So if you want to spare County General next, or 15,723, you'll want to make the motion to approve the whole thing. That's just my opinion.
Do you want to...
I'm not just trying to help County General out, because that's where we're going to be in a bind this next year.
You're going to, that's the 30,000, you're going to 14 or, well, 16 and a half of it's going to go to...
It already has, 15,723.
And you're going to take the rest of it and put it back in County General.
I'm going to take, if you approve the 30,000, I will take the, the 14,000 that we paid for part of Diana's salary to the city. I will move that from being paid out of County General and move it over and pay it out of...
Edit funds.
Edit funds. We'll either do it that way, or I can just reimburse County General for the money.
Yeah, but they still got the 30,000. They got the whole 30,000.
No, EDG got 15,723. The city got 14,000 to reimburse them half of Diana's salary.
But that's an addition for the 60,000 that was...
Yes.
Okay, that was an addition, so now...
So the 15,723 is...
EDG is getting 75,000 from us.
Right.
Does it only get Community Development Board's work anymore?
You say you already paid it, Devin, it's already paid, so we're trying to move this money into our general.
They submitted both bills in the first quarter.
We're trying to move this money into our general, right?
Yes, it's what we're trying to do.
Let's get it in there.
I'd say yes, but you have the general.
But we already paid it in.
Do you wish to amend your resolution?
Do you wish to amend your...
Thanks for paying them.
Yeah, well, we already paid them. There's nothing we can do.
I mean, I have, I have an approved appropriation to pay it from, so that's where we paid it from.
Okay.
You know.
I see what you're saying, Devin. But next budget time, we can see.
We can...
We're looking at...
You don't want that, you need to adjust it.
Okay, I'll make a motion and we... He's got a motion.
He's got one.
He's got a motion?
You have to rescind your motion.
I'm going to rescind my motion at this time.
Okay.
Okay, I make the motion to do the 30,000 and to do with what Devin says to transfer.
Transfer funds.
Transfer funds back.
Do I have a second?
A second, what Mark said.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks, Wolf, for...
Been moved in second and improved, that we moved the money.
You didn't do it, you said you would.
To General Fund. Next. Next item, next item, voters ineligible deductions for equipment. This is yours, Devin.
Yes, my, the copier in my office is on its last legs, which probably Shirley can attest to the last time you used it.
Maybe that's what's wrong with it.
Yeah. We, we, I had, I had someone come in to service it. They said, there is no sense in paying, you know, $700 for parts to put in this machine that's about dead. So we, we had gotten quotes from the office shop, and then Ben had gotten quotes from Rico because they're also looking at replacing three other copiers in the courthouse. I think one in the surveyor's office and one in the treasurer's office and one somewhere else. I forget what the other place was. Anyway, I told them we have this money coming in, which can be used for equipment and such in my office out of that ineligible deduction. So I want to pay for my own copier.
How much is it?
Have we thought about leasing?
Well, we have looked at a lease option, and we have looked at the purchase. Overall, the outright purchase, then they provide, you know, then we pay them a maintenance contract that provides all of the toner and all of the maintenance and everything on it, so. It's like 2,000 and... How much, you remember that Shirley, 2,000 and...
I don't remember the particulars, but Ben has done an analysis, what, whether it was less expensive to lease or purchase. And because, again, they want to...
It was about half the price of the other because Rico has the state contract. Then they come back and they said, well, we calculated wrong, it's going to be an extra 250. Well, then I talked to Ben after that, and Ben went back at him and said, hey, you quoted us this price, so they're going to give it to us at that. We're going to have to pay that extra on it, so.
Good, we should get it while they're holding, while they're holding that price.
But Ben did that analysis. And it's based on whether you pay for supplies or not pay for supplies, whether you pay for repairs or not pay for repairs.
Could you pay for that with the edit money?
I don't know, I guess you could.
Hey, last meeting, last meeting.
I would agree, but it, it wasn't placed in the capital improvement fund.
There you go.
Hey, AJ, we did take some money away from commissioners on that, that tribal expense and stuff, which was edit money. That'd be a smart place to spend it right now is for a coffee machine, so we don't have to take it from any other place.
Well, I can't comment on how it was done then, but I would say now I'd be more comfortable as the county attorney acting now if any requests were placed in the capital improvement plan as directed by the statute, so.
So if we're, if we're looking at, if we're looking at more copiers...
So if we're, if we're looking at, if we're looking at more copiers, so the Commissioners' capital improvement plan, they need to change that and put in that, for that edit money to be used for those copiers in there for next year.
I would say, yeah.
The way I read, the way I understand that code.
I, I believe that, that goes with maintaining the courthouse, I would say.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The, the other thing you could also look at, because, like Mark said, that three-year thing, the money, anything we're holding that is unspent after the three years, then would need to go, you know, back, revert back. There may be some other things we could do yet this year, if you could have it, open a discussion with the Commissioners, maybe pay, I think I talked to Dale about this when we were talking some budget stuff just this past month, because there, there is some money that, there's like a thousand, you know, that, well, there's actually like, what did it total up to, Dale? Hundred eighty-five thousand?
Are you talking about the unappropriated?
No, I'm talking about what we have in County General paying, paying on utilities.
Oh.
It's like a hundred eighty-five thousand. If we could shift that over and pay that out of Edit this year, then that would get, we could, we would get pretty close to probably, according to my analysis, we could get pretty close, we would break even on revenue and expenses this year out of County General.
To pay utilities for Edit.
Yeah, if we moved, shifted some of the, the utilities that are currently in the, in County General.
That was in the.
You're just wondering, see, another thing, too, when you're talking about utilities, is that going to be in the capital improvement plan?
I think that's already in the.
There is some, but not all of it.
I mean, if they, if they, if we do that again, to try and to save this general fund, and use this edit money for improve, for the courthouse, then that has to be put in that fund.
Yeah.
Now, we don't use it at all, then it goes closer to that two-year?
Yeah, three years. Three years, and then it goes.
Okay.
And I think I stressed this at that Friday session we had one time, is that, and I'll say it here, too, I don't think the council should be adverse to communicating directly with the Commissioners, negotiating on what goes in that capital improvement plan. I absolutely encourage that, too.
And I believe that there was communication, but now we can do it to a greater extent.
Well, I've been just trying to think of ways, of ways to help the general fund, so that we're in a better position coming up to budget time.
I think we're all for the same thing. We want to help out the County General Fund and to be able to pass a budget. So, on this particular appropriation request for three thousand dollars for a copier, Debbie's, the auditor's office is in need of a new copier.
She's going to pay for that out of her funds.
Other funds. Now, that one fund, yeah, that, that ineligible deduction.
Eligible deduction fund. We're going after people, and this revenue is available. How about a motion?
Mark, we already made it.
Thank God.
Who seconded it? Mark Knobby?
Thank you.
Don't matter.
Oh, Mike.
No, Mark Blom. Mark Blom.
You made it, but.
Mark Blom, who seconded?
Who seconded? Mark Knobby?
Mark Blom.
Mark and Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed.
We won't make a.
Already did that last one.
Paper concerns?
They all die.
There was a, there was a lady here that waited a long time. She finally left.
I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I got a, I got a question.
Well, I got something else, too.
Has Debbie, has the Commissioners looked, have they talked to Diane Wright about a grant to build this building for the Highway Department? Or is anything floating around?
I don't, I mean, I try to, I'm not totally up to date on all grant stuff, but that.
No, but I mean, have they asked?
I can speak to that. I don't, Shirley knows.
Surely do.
I can speak to it. It went on a request for our comprehensive economic development strategy. The new Highway Garage went on that list, where the group used the new OKRA standards to rate it, as far as is this an infrastructure program, is it for the county, city, what's been done, engineering, what have you. That process has been going down. There were like twenty items listed, and this County Highway Garage was one of them. And then based on the, there will be a meeting held within the next thirty days to determine whether we want to join together with the six-county group, so that if and when that region comes to pass, and we have an opportunity to apply for Economic Development Administration funds, then it's going to be a matter of how this priority shakes out. So would the Highway Garage have more precedence or priority than the sewer separation, as an example? And it might have to do with the safety concerns. And perhaps, if we'd have known better, how the safety items, you know, come into play, it might have a different rating. So yes, it's on the list.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm saying that this council feels that this garage is going to fall down, so it is on our list. And I think that she's a county, a city, county grant writer. She need, if we request her to look into that, we don't need to wait on this committee.
Correct.
And we don't have time.
Start her, quickly.
I, I will just say, the biggest source of money you have out there for something like this, that we have typically used, would be CDBG funds. And that's what we used when we, when I got the grant for the senior center, got the grant for the Everton Firehouse, what I bought the fire truck out of, what I did getting water out to Alcoina, they were, they did not have, they had unsafe drinking water. When we.
Was that one of them sewer projects?
The Everton Sewer Project, that was what was worked on.
Right.
And the, and I, I, I've kept my, I've kept my grant certification current, just recertified this past year. And I will say, no, it would not qualify for that. You have, you, there's certain things, if it were a public, like, say, well, there are certain, certain things qualify, and typically, we use low to moderate income for that, that it serves as a whole people that, low to moderate income. Where you don't have really people that go down to the Highway Garage specifically. The senior center, that was, that's sort of presumptive low to mod class. So you have to meet all these, because it's federal money, you have to meet all these certifications. So unless she knows of something somewhere else, it wouldn't qualify for that, for sure.
Well, I don't think it would hurt for, for us to ask her.
Can't hurt my health.
Can't hurt my health. I agree.
I really do. And I don't think, I mean, with that, with your organization, that group you're talking about, you know, that's fine, too, let them look and have it. I'm sure we'll get thrown at the bottom when it gets to that.
Do you want to make that in the form of a motion, or can?
No, I think, oh, she has to do this mention to the Commissioners, the Commissioners take it, would ask her, or Debbie can ask her, if it's a problem like we're saying the building is falling down. But I think we need to look at every, every avenue that we can to get some money, instead of using our, all, out of that, yeah, out of that Q cap.
Okay.
We could have heard a thousand dollars, that's better than nothing.
Way better.
Done her task. Jim, you said you.
Okay, our next meeting is in July, on July 2nd. That's my centennial week. I'd like to move it forward to the 9th of July.
I second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to be in trouble. 9th is my anniversary, so I can make, go ahead.
Then I definitely would make a motion to do that. It's generally trouble.
Okay, good. Move to second. Any discussion? All in favor? You want to go for the second Tuesday, or do you want to do it?
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday.
What's your reason?
Huh? Because my centennial.
What is it?
Huh?
What are you doing now?
Nothing. I just thought people might want to be optimistic.
Well, I just wanted to.
I think it's a good point, Jim. I think it's a good point. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion here. Now, anything else?
I make motion to a adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
I'll probably, I'll probably be divorced, boy.